Yes, Logan is on. He's out of town.
He's a better guy than me.
Okay, if we got Logan here and if we're streaming, it's close enough to seven o'clock, we'll get her started. Okay, welcome everybody, August 11th, 2020, regular city council meeting. We have Logan Monson attending electronically. And those who are there, welcome. We'll have a prayer or thought by council member Perkins, followed by the pledge.
First, just loving Father in heaven, we are so grateful to meet together this evening to discuss the welfare of this awesome city that we live in. We are grateful for the opportunity to serve. We're grateful that we get to live here. And get to be part of this community. We recognize the responsibility that has been given us and we ask you to help us to make decisions that are truly in the best interest of as many people as possible. Recognizing all points of view. We thank thee for all that thou has given us. These things we say in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We reviewed the minutes, financial disbursements, and are ready to approve the agenda.
I'll make motion that we approve the consent agenda, minutes and financial disbursements.
Perkins and Turk, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Looking at the agenda, are there any specific declaration of conflict of interest?
I think I just mentioned when we get to the parking lot maintenance, my brother owns the property that's adjacent. So just declare that conflict.
Very good. Open forum, we have one email that has come in. Has everybody had a chance to read that email from Josh Nielsen? And so take that into consideration. I don't think I'll take the time to read it here, but he's asking about contribution towards an ATV right that he's sponsoring in some ways similar and always different than the the Safari. And so if a council member wanted to take that up and have a conversation with him and bring him back, that would be welcome. They can do that. Any other comments? We've got one member of the community here. That's about the most we can accommodate in this room, so that's good.
I'm fine, thanks.
Okay. Any other for open forum unless anybody else had anything? Okay, department reports. Terry Ecker, water.
Alrighty, you hear me okay? Perfect. Looks like Jeremy's getting the July 2020 water report up on the whiteboard. Nothing too exciting or too different from normal this time of year. The pipeline flow was about half of what it was last year. And last year we had, you know, quite a little bit better spring recharge and everything. Water usage has been up just a little bit as well with hotter temperatures in July. And, you know, very little monsinal moisture. Our annual precipitation, we're still dropping below 100. Looks like every month we get a little lower. And then I just put a note there, 102 acre feet of dry wash water came through the third for the irrigators. So that's part of just notes for me for future when I can see how much dry wash dropped and and where, so I know where that water went. But dry wash is coming down pretty fast. Within the next week or two, dry wash will be down to conservation pool and irrigation season for the upper ditch will be complete. Any questions on water report for July?
Hey, is the third down to the level you need it at now for that project?
Yeah, we've, council member Turk, we've kind of reevaluated that. So when we determined that we had a real need there, the water was at a certain level with ice, a little bit hard to see, and the concrete's really deteriorated on one of the numbers that stamped in the concrete. And once we got that water down partway, we kind of abandoned that project. We feel like that we can probably redhead a piece of metal with a welded number on the one location that's really difficult to read and save some money. We'll put that project off for another 10 years or so, I think.
Oh, thank you.
Yep.
All questions on water? Okay, moving on, Chief Bradford, please.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Council. For July, we're starting to see a more normal set of numbers that kind of get us back in the flow with our numbers from last year. The only thing that we're really below on is just our warrants. We just haven't been searching those warrants because it's tough to clear them and get people into the jail, but things are going pretty well. Cole's been out patrolling on his own now for almost a month and he's, he's coming along very well. He's got a pretty good grasp of it. Chris Sanchez has been in the academy now for, this is his second week. I will have him back in about a month and a half. He seems to be really enjoying himself up there and also sort of taking a leadership role, helping other cadets out in the academy with his knowledge he's bringing from the jail. We're getting geared up for another school year. We'll be working with the schools on, working in the schools on to remind people of the student crossings and speed and crosswalks, so. We're still plugging along.
Well, and you mentioned crosswalks, and I don't know where we stand on with UDOT on the striped highway and we, have we heard anything from them on the other side, including?
I've been wondering that, thank you for asking.
The last I heard from them, coronavirus had really cut into their budget. And so that, that was the last I heard, but I'll follow up with them again and see, but
Yeah.
That was the word I got in that.
I don't ever know whether to take the coronavirus excuse at face value on most things.
With, with UDOT, where a lot of it is gas tax. You know, when people stopped driving for the last few months, I think it really did impact them. But I, from what I'm hearing, everything's coming back and so I'll, I'll get back.
And did we ever, remember Jay Porter, the principal of elementary, made a request for Center Street? As far as the crosswalk, like flags or something, did we ever decide on what we wanted to do there or do anything?
I don't know. I had a discussion with Terry about it, but we haven't.
Never decided yet.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll put it back on my list here.
Hey, any other questions for, on police, for chief?
If they get all those re-stripped, repainted across the block, so they look, people can see them.
So did JJ, you there?
Yes.
So did Cole get tasered?
Yes, he did. He got tasered. It, it kind of rocked his world. I fortunately just got to do the, the research, so I didn't have to, but yeah. Get with me and we'll show you a video.
Take him down. It works. Okay, moving on, rec report. Do we have David out there?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
First of all, I'm disappointed that the video of the tasering wasn't brought to council tonight.
Yeah.
So the, the rec report, as we've seen throughout this year, obviously, things are just a little bit down. We're having a lot less of our, our people from outside of town sign up, but our numbers are still really strong considering. So we've been having some really good seasons. We're in the middle of soccer right now. We've actually had soccer games going on as we speak. With 20 soccer teams in the league just blending alone, which is really good. So other than that, we, there's the big question mark. It's looming over our football right now. And we just finished our, our registration process. And not quite sure what Moab's going to do. And so we're going to keep moving forward cautiously optimistic that we're going to have it. We're going to go ahead and do a draft tomorrow night. And see what we have. We'll, we'll at least have flag football for sure, but tackle. There's still a lot of things that need to happen for that, so I'll keep you posted as much as I can.
When does that normally start?
Well, soccer ends the last Thursday of this month on the 27th, and then we go right into practicing football the next day, basically, and we go right into it.
First, first part of September.
Yeah, and we go to flag football will just run the month of September and tackle will actually go a little bit longer. They'll go mid-October.
And, and the issue with that is not having Moab to play, possibly not having Cortez to play.
Yeah, so Moab is, is taking registrations right now. They kind of online. There's a big question mark that says inquire within, but I spoke to their rec director and they're, they're moving forward and hopefully going to try. So we'll see. If, if it just ends up and we have two blending teams, that's, that's not a good situation in tackle football when when they're just going at it every time. There's something different needs to happen and I'm not quite sure what, we'll kind of cross that road as we get there. I don't want kids having to take an entire year off of football, but we'll, we'll see what happens.
Could remix the teams maybe just to change it up a little bit, but that is hard if you don't have anybody to play.
It is.
It's hard doing football to mix them up because you have plays and coaching.
They can learn it. I, so I shot you and Jeremy a text. A member of the public asked me if we were going to water our grass that was dying down there, and I guess we have a water, a water main that's broken. What's our timeline on getting the water back?
Down to Centennial?
Yeah.
I don't know an answer on how quickly it'll be back. You could probably maybe refer to Terry on that. I know, I know him and his guys are concerned about it, about getting that back on for us. But I don't have an answer for that. The sooner the better because it takes quite a pounding during soccer season and you, you can see it right now, so.
It'll, it'll spring back. I mean, I, a, a home that had gone unoccupied in our neighborhood and had no water for four years is green now, just months later. So, you know, it'll come back, but anyway, it's, it's good that the public's concerned and they're asking about it, so.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Anything else on rec? Okay.
Unless you have questions for me.
All right. Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Hey, Mayor, this is Logan.
Yeah.
Just with rec, I do need, we do have a rec board member that we do need to get replaced. I'll get with you on a couple of names that I have for that, but just so everyone knows that it's, it's in the process.
Hey, thanks for the update. Shoot me a text or just give me a call sometime, we'll get it going.
And when it's, when it's showing these, the expenses, the operating expenses, and then it has the asterisk and figures do not include the $50,000 bond payment. What's, what's that?
That's the bond payment for the wellness center. $50,000 a year we pay on that.
Okay, so that's just not included in that cost. It would be plus 50.
Expenses, yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Whether we operate or not, we have to pay that.
Okay, we, you know, amidst all the confusion and the downturning of economy and everything else, we do have two new or expanding street front businesses. Recognize council member of ours, Cheryl, has opened up the Blue Sage Inn. She's off getting a missionary shipped out, so she's not here to accept that. We'll make sure that she does. And I need to get over here to check this place out because I haven't been there yet. Creamy Delights over here on Main Street, and I hear a lot of people talking about really good things about them. So we're really glad to have them throwing in and trying to keep the business community going.
Sharon Diamond owns that Creamy Delights. And they have like ice cream and treats and paninis.
That's a really good project.
Yeah, they've got lots of good stuff.
All the stuff, that's why I haven't been there. It's all the stuff that I'm trying not to eat, you know, so I'm still gonna have to go.
You take your grandkids.
Yeah, and I'll eat some lots. So it's, it's just, I don't know, it always, I always like seeing people putting that out there and taking the risk and trying to make that go. So carbon free power project review, Jeremy read. This is kind of prompted a little bit by some information that council's been receiving, which is, I would say, less than accurate as far as how this project works. And so we're just trying to bring everybody up to speed.
Okay. So we haven't talked about this project for a long time and it's been going for many years, so this is going to take a little bit of time. And I, I tried to put this together. We're not making any decisions tonight. I wanted to bring everyone back up to speed and then think of your questions and come to me, hopefully and talk about them. Send me an email, whatever. As you know, so a little bit of the project overview, the carbon free power project is the nuclear project that we're involved in with UAMPS. It's a 720 megawatt small modular reactor. I think you've all seen on my desk in my office is that sort of the demonstration of what that's, each module is going to look like. We've been in development with UAMPS since 2012 on this project. Its intention is to replace the carbon base load that's approaching the end of its useful life to replace our coal plants that we currently get base load power from. And we've set up a process where there's a economic competitive test, so we, we need to make sure that this power is competitive with other things we can buy. And they've set that levelized cost of energy of $55 per megawatt hour. I can show you a little bit about how that compares to what we're currently using, but it's really comparable to what we currently have. In some of the information that I sent with the packet, Department of Energy has, has pledged support of $1.4 billion over the next nine years to make this project a reality. So they really want to see it happen as well. It's, it's something that, that is really important to the federal government as well. So the way this works is the costs on the project are, are tracked by participant based on the share of the project that we own. And that's real similar to every other project in UAMPS, but that's going to become important here as we go forward in the slide deck. And then another thing that's important to realize is that cast, costs are capitalized into the project at financing and construction. Not, we're not paying it as we go, if that makes sense. We're, we're incurring costs, those costs are being borrowed. The money's being borrowed and we're being sort of allocated a share of those costs, but we're not currently paying it each month or anything like that. Hasn't impacted our, our finances as a city to this point. Unless a participant withdraws completely from the project or the project management committee votes to terminate the project. So if, if the committee, each, each participant that's, that has a stake in the project has a member on that committee. And that's called the project management committee. And we, when we meet every month in our UAMPS meetings, if that entire committee chooses to scuttle the project, then we would be responsible for the cost to this point. So a little bit about our participation history. We came in in 2015 with an initial study amount of six megawatts. And I don't know if any of you were here in 2015 besides the mayor, but were you here in 2015? Probably. Yeah. We, we were, you know, Blending City's always been very supportive of, of nuclear power, of the uranium industry. So we went into this initial study phase of six megawatts. And you can see our peak use in January was 5.8 megawatts. So we really don't need six megawatts. That's more than our entire use as a city on our highest month. So we don't need that. But we were, we were showing support in that initial study phase, so we went in at six megawatts to show that support. In 2018, when we actually had to sign power sales contracts, we did our initial budget plan of finance, we went in at 2.5 megawatts. We reduced from six to 2.5. Then we had this, in 2019, there was a thing called the jump module, and this is a little bit complicated, but the federal government, before they put in the 1.4 billion, said, we're going to buy some of the modules. The Department of Energy was going to buy those modules and they were going to pay for them and use them for the first 15 years. And then after that, they were going to give them to whoever wanted them in the project. And so we said, absolutely, let's go in for another megawatt and a half. Up to a megawatt and a half. We didn't end up with that much. We ended up with 996 kilowatts. So our, our total subscription right now is 3,496 kilowatts or three, almost three and a half megawatts is where we're at. And so you take, right now, the total subscription amount is 213 megawatts, and of that, we're allocated 3.496, which means we end up being 1.64% of the total project. If that makes sense. So you can see there's points at which we can go up, we can go down, or we can get out of the project. And, and these points, this point here, we made that choice to go from six to two and a half. So here's where we're at so far in the project. Our, our 1.64% up until September 2020, they're estimating we're going to spend 4.77 million total, the entire project. So our share of that 1.64% is $78,571. The majority of those development costs, like I said, are tracked and financed with the project. So if we left the project, we would be responsible to pay $78,571 that's already been incurred as our portion. We would have 12 months to coordinate the payment of that. So it's a little bit complicated. When we were in the study phase, we were in this initial six megawatt phase, those costs are not capitalized. We were paying those as we went and we've paid $50,551 so far. And that money's sitting there earmarked for Blending City, and if we got out of the project, we could, we could use, likely use that money to help pay our $78,000. We also have $65,000 on deposit at UAMPS, and we call this development savings. And it's, it came from way back when Blending City did something similar. We got into a project that was Intermountain Power Project in Delta. It was a coal-fired power plant, and we put money into that, and then California sued, didn't want the, the coal-fired plant to be built because it would somehow the smog would go east to west and impact them. And so then UAMPS, so they stopped the project, UAMPS sued them, we settled. We ended up with our portion was $65,000 that we just kept in reserve up at UAMPS in a PTIF account for new projects that we wanted to look at. So in essence, we have this $115,000 sitting there of the 78 that we've already incurred. So we're, we're on the good end of this thing so far. So that's kind of where we're at today. We are at one of those points again where we can choose to increase, decrease, or pull out of the project. Through September 20th, this is our share, where now they put out a budget plan of finance that takes us through April of 2023, which is licensing phase one. So you can see we spent $4 million. We're going to spend almost 20 million total to get to the end of that first licensing phase. So our share to get to that point is going to be 327,175. And again, remember, we're not paying that. They're just allocating it to us. When the project gets built, it's going to be wrapped up into the entire financing package and we'll pay for it over, you know, the entire length of the project as we buy power from the project. So you can see these new, these are the new phases. The next phase will be 20 million. The phase after that gets us to licensing phase two, 658 million. And then construction, we're looking at 4.7 billion to get the project constructed. So you can see the numbers get real and hurt. They get very expensive. So here's kind of where everybody's at. Right now, we're 1.64% of that 213 megawatts that's been subscribed. And, and everybody in the project is looking to de-risk their position. You know, we don't want to be 1.64% of 4.7 billion dollars. We're just, we just don't want to be that. And so far, there's 213 megawatts subscribed and the whole project is 720. So we really want to sell the entire 720 to somebody so that they're taking more of the risk. We're taking a little less of the risk as we move forward. So what you have is you have 60 days from the time that they, they pass this budget plan of finance, which was July 15th, to make our choice again. So we have to choose by September 15th what we want to do, increase, decrease, or terminate. The key to the project is de-risking the project, so we get more participation from other people, which drives down our percentage. So we're not paying as much. So, so there's this interesting, let me show you this. Let me show you this spreadsheet that I put together that I think helps to see what, what I'm talking about here. Our current entitlement is 3.496 megawatts. Every other UAMPS member is 209 and a half. So that gives us our 1.64. So that's where we're currently at. One thing that, that happens is, let me go back up to this one. If we were to go down, say we took our 3.4 megawatts and we went down to one, we said, we're just, we're going to reduce our, our share. Well, every other person in the project now has to pay a little bit more, right? Because it's done by percentage. So if everybody goes down, we end up paying the same percentage, but, but there's now more room for more people to get into the project to take on entitlements, or other participants. So but every time somebody, there's 35 different cities and, and we don't know what the other 34 cities are planning to do. So it really does impact us. If they go up, we pay less. If they go down, we pay more. So we kind of want to try to coordinate this if we can. And everybody feels like, I say everybody, almost everyone, as we've talked about it amongst the PMC, they want to de-risk the project. Everybody kind of wants to go back down to allow room for more subscription, so that the risk is lessened. So this is sort of the
It's only less if people buy in.
If people buy in.
So why, why would we only have 213, 700?
Because right now, that's, it's just been UAMPS members. They haven't opened it up to anybody else for subscription.
So, I mean, maybe that, maybe you're answering what I'm thinking too, but I mean, there's a lot of available power there. So, so why is that not, you know, so, so why would freeing up more availability help if there's already plenty of it?
Yeah, it's, it, it opens, well, there's, there's plenty of it, but we want even more to be open. It's a little bit counterintuitive, but let me, let me run through this, and if it doesn't answer your question, maybe I'll, I'll try to answer it again. I, I understand that, because this is going to explain exactly what you're talking about. So, so UAMPS came out and suggested that everybody reduces at the same rate. So we would go from 3.4 megawatts down to 526 kilowatts. And every other UAMPS member would drop at the same percentage. So we'd end up with 32 subscribed megawatts instead of 213. And that allows all that extra room for, for everybody else to come into the project. So now, between now and 2023, the whole crux of the project is selling subscription. If we can't get the subscription sold, the project is not going to make it either way. Because we can't, we can't go and build a 720 megawatt power plant with 213 megawatts of power subscribed. So, so that's, that's their
Or 32.
Or 32, or anything really.
Kind of echoing Logan's question there then is so I don't know, I don't know if this, there's, there's supply and demand in the world. Yeah. And if we increase the supply of something that there's already an abundant supply of.
Yeah, and so this gets, this gets complicated into the these power sales contracts. So here's, here's what's interesting about it. The power sales contract has this provision where it allows us to go down to the 5.26, but also safe harbor the rest of our allotment, so that if we want to go back up on the next phase, it sort of holds that for us, if that makes sense. So in essence, you've still got, I'll, I'll show you why it matters. We still have the ability to go back.
More power, but yeah, not really.
Well, here's why. So let's go to this, here's the reduction.
Only if I decide I want.
Here's the reduction with the new subscription. So here's what we had before. If you've got 15 megawatts sitting out there and they think they have 15 megawatts just right away, so everybody reduces.
They have it, meaning somebody would subscribe to.
They can subscribe right away. They feel like, we know we have one person that wants to come in at one megawatt, but they really feel pretty comfortable about 15. So if everybody reduces down to 32, and then we get 15 more. So if everybody reduces down to thirty-two and then we get fifteen more, then that takes our percentage down to one point one two. So now, so what it does is every additional participant is based off of thirty-two megawatts instead of two hundred and thirteen. So they take a comparatively larger percentage of the buy by coming in at one megawatt or five megawatts or ten megawatts, if that makes sense. They don't have the safe harbor, cause they haven't been in the project so far. So it basically allows us to de-risk our portion while still maintaining that, that ability to go back up if, if we decide we wanna do that. So, cause we would like more than five hundred and twenty-six kilowatts. So, I know this is getting really.
So, I mean, not straightforward, but you know, the, you know, there's a lot of available capacity. The seven twenty minus the two thirteen currently, right? So this all hinges on getting more, you know, getting all that consumed.
Yeah.
And if, if you're in a, you know, trying to pitch this to somebody, I mean, the more that's already subscribed, the less share they have. So it, it's easier to pitch it to somebody, the more that's already subscribed. So going down hurts trying to sell it, doesn't it? Cause they would own a bigger percentage of what's allocated.
It does, except for this, yes. And this safe harbor provision, we tell them we want five twenty-six and then we immediately tell them we also want the rest of our allocation. So we end up sort of back at two thirteen as far as selling it to everybody else. But when they come in at one megawatt, now they're paying, if they come in at one megawatt, they're gonna pay three percent of the total cost. Does that make sense? And we still have that ability to go up if we want to.
But as soon as we do, then our percentage is bigger. Then we're right back.
But we wouldn't go up until that next phase, till the, just before the next phase. So we're paying less during this phase, but we have the ability to go up for the next phase.
Well, how, I mean, so you listed in the, the info here, fifty-five dollars per, per megawatt hour. That is, what is that number exactly?
So all along.
That's the estimated.
That's the estimated cost of that power when we buy it.
How does that compare?
Um, I have a sheet on that. I thought you might ask that. Uh, it's, right now, we're about fifty-seven average for Blending City. And I can show you how each of our
Retail, that's what we pay.
That's our cost of power.
Our cost.
About fifty-seven dollars a megawatt hour.
Does that seem, I mean, based on the information I have, I'm like, that's not a bad number.
No, it's a really good number. The other thing that's happening all along the way, and, and this kind of goes to what you were talking about with the emails that we got, where everybody's concerned about price escalation, is they're constantly running this test. And anytime that this test fails and we don't make the fifty-five dollars, then, then the project's over. So if we get to, if we run this economic competitive test and we run it out of eighty dollars, then it's no longer competitive with everything else we can buy. And so project's done, we're done and, and we, we, we close it up. So I have this one last full subscription here. You can see, so this is assuming that we took, we went down to five twenty-six. The whole project got subscribed. We went back up to our three and a half megawatts. We're now at a half a percent of the project instead of one point six four percent of the project, which is a lot more palatable. And then if you decide, you know, you really wanna go back down to maybe two and a half, you know, we're gonna be at point three five. So we're actually gonna be a little better than that, cause we, this went down slightly, but does that make sense? So, so right now, every city's kind of looking at the same thing. What do we do? How do we, how do we make this work? How do we keep up moving forward? We're gonna find out a lot as we all kind of get to the end of this. And, and if, if other cities go down by more or they drop out, then we get another chance to, to look at our allocation again. So we're not stuck at whatever we end up deciding. Cause every time somebody changes, you get another ten days to try to make a decision on what you wanna do.
When all the other original, when any other original member changes than everybody else has. So how does it actually work? So let's say, let's say we're, however many years in the future, we own, pick a number, two percent of it, which is however many, you know, megawatts that is, what does that mean?
So we, if we own two and a half megawatts, we have the, we take two and a half megawatts. We buy it, we take it and we have to pay for it.
Okay, so you, you pay for it at the fifty-five?
At fifty-five dollars a megawatt hour, which is fine. Cause, and, and let me show you some other slides that might help a lot to help you understand kind of where we're at right now as a city. And this is why it's, this is why we jumped in so far and this is why it's important. Here's our current power source. This is a little bit dark, but you can see, um, we get nine percent from the Colorado River, from Page at the dam, hydro power. We're getting twenty-five percent from San Juan in Farmington from the coal plant that's gonna go away. We get five percent from our wind farm at Horsebutte. We're at forty-seven percent right now. We're just buying on the market. So every day or every month, we just go out and buy product to fill our need that we don't have locked in in any way. I mean, we can kind of buy future products and things, but we don't own the resource. And then thirteen percent of it comes from the pool, which is just another purchase, um, product. So right now, sixty percent of what we buy is at market prices. And we're looking at another twenty-five percent of that when that coal plant closes, being at market. So it's fine to have some at market, but if we have eighty-five percent of our power at market or whatever, I guess that's, it's forty-seven plus thirteen, yeah. We'd, we'd end up with eighty-five percent at market.
I think this is important for us to understand a little bit how this works. So those other projects, let's say like the Colorado River. When we say we get nine percent from there, I mean, obviously, first of all, that doesn't mean that, you know, that, that exact electricity comes here, but we own.
We own the right to it.
We own, well, I mean, it's just, it's just paper account. Yeah, that, the right to take that much off the grid, which, how did that happen? How do we, why do we own that? How did that happen?
So I don't, I don't a hundred percent understand that, but when they built the, the dam at Page, the federal government allocated that electricity. And I believe, I don't know if we had to buy into that at the time, or it was just part of a federal project and then they allocated that electricity out to.
But we own some portion of it, which, which results in nine percent of our, we own it. We, can we sell it?
Uh, I don't know on that one, if we could sell it, because it's federally controlled and they made that allocation. But I assume, I mean, if we want to, people would love to take that power. We could certainly sell the power to somebody.
Yeah. Okay. Cause does that lock us in at certain rates or, cause I'm still trying to understand.
Let me show you the rates here. So this is, this is by megawatt hour. So this is Colorado River. This is, it's twenty-seven point six. Hydro is really, really cheap. San Juan right now, seventy-three dollars a megawatt for our coal. And that's because all the federal regulations have been put on coal, makes it cost prohibitive. That's why we're
Seen it go up since you've been doing this.
It was more than the fifty range.
Really? So we're talking huge percentage then?
Fifty percent increase. And, and so you can see, they're not making us close this, but it's not cost, cost effective anymore to run it. Um, Horsebutte, our wind farm is eighty-seven dollars a megawatt hour. So we're getting five percent of our power, we're paying eighty-seven dollars for it, but we have green power, right? Like green power costs more than coal power, usually.
Is there any rumbling about that, about a higher requirements or extending those requirements for green power deeper into the little, the little consumers?
So almost every legislative session, so a lot of, a lot of states already have a green power mandate. And they say fifty percent of your power has to be, uh, from a carbon-free source by twenty thirty or twenty fifty, or whatever they put. They put these carbon mandates on things. Utah has not done that. Utah has a carbon mandate that says, try to get all the carbon you can if it's feasible. That's kind of their thing right now. But every legislative session, somebody brings up a bill that says, that has a carbon mandate. It's, it's usually a Democrat, but this last time it was a Republican. I mean, it's gaining more traction all the time. There will be a time, I'm, I'm assuming, when Utah will put in a carbon mandate. And right now, we are, what did I say there? Uh, fourteen percent renewable. So we get nine percent from Colorado River, which they consider renewable, and we have the five percent wind farm. So, I mean, fifty percent, thirty-five percent, we'd be, what we would have to do is we would have to go out and as we're buying on the market, we'd have to go out and buy renewable energy specifically to meet our mandate. That's what we have to, and that's more expensive right now.
Very high price, yeah.
So, so you can see right now, we're going out and buying on the market. We're buying in the forty-five to fifty-five dollar range, depending on, on who we're buying it from. That this pool is usually other UAM's members that have, have excess power for sale.
And, you know, that's a decent rate. That's, that's below our average cost. Man, that screws up our averages. Same with the, the, the coal, cause that's a bigger portion.
Twenty-five percent of the power.
And then the, the winds, the small portion, but man, that's a lot higher than everything else. So where's that power coming from? You know, you know, generally.
So the pool is usually other UAM's members that have excess power. A lot of it is, is coal, a lot of it is, uh, hydro, other people on hydro plants.
It must be hydro or something. Cause if the coal, unless the coal plant's very low.
Like I know sometimes we'll buy, so this is what Kay Johnson used to do. Every day he used to sit and, and put in bids with other UAM's members to buy power. And like, I know some of them have, uh, Washington City, Bountiful, they have natural gas peaking plants. So in the middle of the summer, they can run those plants and sell us that power. So some is natural gas, some is.
Some municipalities are, yes, even power companies, they have locked in more than their, their requirements. They go and sell it.
Yeah.
So lots of people, they don't have this pool, other cities, some other cities wouldn't.
So when I first started with UAMs, a lot of cities were long on their positions. And as those cities on the west edge front have grown, a lot of them have become short, especially while they're waiting for the carbon-free project to come through. Cause they, they wanted this big allocation of nuclear and it's taken a long time for that project. But as their cities grow, they haven't really been buying into other projects, cause they've been waiting for the nuclear project. So one of the problems that Kay ran into is where people used to sell a lot, they, they stopped kind of doing that. They, they needed the power for themselves and it got harder and harder to buy that power from other cities. Um, so the pool, the pool can be other cities. It can also just be the market price of that hour. So if we're not, if we, if we run short on power, we just have to go buy it at market rate, whatever that is. And then the PX, these are, um, negotiated power purchases. So for instance, this July and August, um, a bunch of UAM cities got together and negotiated a power purchase on the market, but they bought it in a block. So we were able to get some for like thirty-eight dollars a megawatt, we got some for forty-five for August. But last year, we were paying a hundred and twenty dollars an hour for that high load, middle of the summer peak, cause it was a lot hotter last summer for most of the country.
Yeah, I see that we're pretty vulnerable. I mean, there's a lot of, yeah, that price differences is huge, depending on where you're getting your power from.
It is, it, exactly right. So if we have to go buy power and we have eighty-five percent on the market, we are really susceptible to the fluctuations. And then if we have to go buy power and for some reason Utah puts in a carbon mandate and we have to go now buy carpet-free power on the market, it's gonna be even more expensive. So this is one of the ideas behind having more of the carbon power and that we're getting way down in the weeds, but I think it's important. Even if we end up with three and a half megawatts and we don't need that every day, there should be a market at fifty-five dollars a megawatt hour to sell it to other, other people who have a carbon mandate who need it.
And so you already talked about the coal that we have a stake in of some sort. I'm still not sure how that works, but.
That one, we own part of the plant.
For UAMs. Okay. And so we, but that price fluctuates. It's not locked in, which makes sense. How, I mean.
So here's how, if, if it always ran at a hundred percent capacity, we'd always have the same price. But with coal, there's a couple of things. The, the quality of the coal matters. So if you get into dirty coal that doesn't produce the, the amount of electricity per unit of coal, then you don't, you, your, your cost goes up, cause you're spending all the money to still buy the coal and, and fire the coal, but you're not getting as much electricity out of it. And then what really kills us on the coal plant is outages. So if you have an outage in that plant, it can only run sixty-five percent of the time this month. You still have to pay all the fixed costs, all the employees, all the stuff, and now you're not getting output from that. So that's another thing that's really started to hurt us on San Juan is these plants are gonna be decommissioned. So we're not spending as much on maintenance. We're not, they're not keeping them up quite as well. And so we have more outage. So we, we plan about eighty percent on San Juan for it to run at eighty percent capacity.
So, but, but we are, and everybody else owns a stake, is just kind of at the, I don't know, I won't say at the mercy, but essentially at the mercy of whoever's operating it and how well they do, we benefit now. Okay. And so the UAM scene would be the same. Without fifty-five dollars, there's no lock-in on that, right? It's, I mean, and it kind of ends up being whatever.
It does. We're running a competitive test to make sure that we're gonna be right in that range. But yeah, you're right. Um, it's, it's a little better with the nuclear, with the twelve-pack nuclear, because, um, a regular nuclear plant has to stop and refuel and they have to shut that whole plant down. They stop producing power and they refuel the rods. On, on this particular one, they always basically are running that plant and they shut down one unit at a time. So you still have eleven units running while you're fueling one. And then they, they get that one up and running and then they shut this one down and fuel it. So you're, you're eleven twelfths at the worst.
Well, and I think, and you might know better, but your percentage of your costs are less. I mean, they're, they're not in the fuel, the things that can, can vary. So you, you're pretty fit. You're a lot more fixed nuclear than you would from other power sources. Is that true?
That's true. Yeah, you, you're a lot more, it's a lot more, uh, well, there's not as many variables.
Yeah. Okay. All right. And all that helps understanding.
So, so the recommendation that I'm making is that we, we right now do what UAMs is recommending. We drop our entitlement to five hundred and twenty-six kilowatts from three point, three thousand four hundred and ninety-six kilowatts. We safe, we safe harbor two thousand nine hundred and seventy kilowatts. So as soon as we do this, we let them know that we want, we still want that twenty-nine seventy. We just don't have to pay for it until twenty twenty-three. So our allocation, our share will go down as long as we get more subscription. The other thing that we wanna do is we wanna allow for the flexibility of an increase of up to ten percent in that development cost. So the development cost for the next share is three hundred and twenty-seven thousand. But say, say we got all the way to the end and there was like one participant who went down, who didn't stick with the program. We don't wanna have to come back. We wanna be able to say, how much flexibility are you willing to give me to, to say, okay, if that estimated share of the licensing is another thirty thousand dollars, we're still comfortable with that. We'll let, we'll go up that much without having to come back and, and, uh, and redo this all. So I thought, you know, maybe ten percent is a good, is a good number in there. Thirty thousand seemed doable. So, like I said, I'm not looking for anything today. What I would like to do is chew on this. I will send out this, uh, presentation to all of you, let you look through it, ask me your questions, sleep on it for a couple of weeks. We'll come back at the next meeting on the twenty-fifth of August and I'll have that resolution and we can, we can see how.
One of the coal, coal facilities shut down completely.
Ours is looking at like twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. So we're still gonna have a six-year period where, where we're wildly out on the market, no matter what we do. And now the other thing that, the reason that we look at fifty-five dollars a megawatt hour is because that's sort of the cost of energy of putting together a new combined cycle natural gas plant right now. So, and, and here's, I, I say right now, that's what today's cost of natural gas. So Logan's right. You, you build a combined cycle natural gas plant and that's great. You might have fifty-five dollars a megawatt today. What happens when the price of gas goes up? Your cost of electricity goes up.
We're historically cheap right now still.
It's historically cheap. It's, it's as cheap as we've seen it in twenty years. I mean, it's, right now, it's crazy how cheap it is. So, yeah, it looks really good today, but you're, you're at the mercy of the cost of that, of that input. Where, um, nuclear, if you go look on my desk, there's that little tiny pellet, you know, and it shows you how many, how many tons of coal that pellet will replace. It's just, you know, whether that's good for energy fuels or not, the price stays pretty consistent, it's pretty, pretty low. And, and really your cost isn't in your fuel. It's in your, it's in your plant. It's the four million dollars worth.
Years of licensing and then the building.
Licensing.
It's not the, it's not the operating, once you get there as much.
Yeah. In fact, a lot of times on these, they'll, they'll operate them and they'll, they'll run the nuclear reaction. And if they don't need it, they'll just, they'll just burn it to steam. You know, they don't, they don't shut down the reaction necessarily. They just, cause your cost of fuel isn't very, isn't very high.
Well, I mean, I, it doesn't make sense. I mean, part of that doesn't make sense to me. It seems like if I'm trying to get more people sign up, I'd want their risk to be less, which by doing this, it would make their risk more new people, but also there.
It does.
But I don't know enough about it. And if that's what you and the UAMs is recommending, then, you know, I know you said we'll decide this next time, but I'm.
I think part of that is a little bit to incentivize the people who've been in for the last eight years. You know what I'm saying? They, yeah, if we stayed where we're at and we let the next person come in with no, with no additional risk, you know, it's good, cause we get subscription. This is, we debate this all the time, you know, what's that eight years' worth of risk? I mean, you know, we're not in it, we're not in it a ton right now. We're in just under eighty thousand dollars. But that's, that's a lot of money, you know? The, the other people haven't had to risk. So when we go and we decrease our, our share, yeah, the, the UAM's members go down to thirty-two with the ability to go back to the two thirteen. And the next guy coming in, if he comes in at one megawatt, or he's one thirty-second of the project right now, but he doesn't get that benefit from the first thing.
Does the, does the, I don't know, call it equity in the project get more expensive close, the further along into you get?
Yeah, and that's another.
Kind of account for.
That's another thing that we're discussing.
So if that's an expected, kind of an expected evolution, then this, the higher risk for anybody buying in if the UAMs come down now, that's not gonna be an unusual thing in the power business for them to like, and say, yeah, you know, the further down the road you go. In the power business for them to like, and say, yeah, you know, the further down the road you go, higher your costs are.
Yeah, and I don't know how much of this I can talk about, I I don't remember what stuff we talked about in closed session. It's just, I gotta be careful, but they are, there is this idea. That there's people wanting to get into the project, but there there's no risk for them yet, so they're just sitting on the sidelines going. Let's let, let's let these guys carry this as far as they'll carry it before I incur any risk, right?
We do that, we'll say, we could do this iteration one more time, and then it'll cost even more to get in, so you better get in.
And and there, and then there's, there's also some ideas.
You said it was counterintuitive, it certainly is.
It's not totally fleshed out yet, but there's also this idea that they might say, alright, up until. This many megawatts, it's gonna be fifty five dollars a megawatt hour, after that, you're gonna buy in at sixty five. Does that make sense? So, so it'll deep, now our fifty five might go to fifty three, fifty two. But these, the new people are gonna pay sixty five, there's gotta be some incentive for people to get in now, take the risk with us. And and carry the project along, and so far, it feels like everyone's kind of going, I'm just gonna wait and see, I'll just wait.
It seemed like there's gotta be some very big players that are just.
There's gotta be.
The people that come in at fifty, you know, and a hundred, you know.
Yeah.
The really big power companies or whoever that.
I mean, even big cities can take sixty megawatts and it won't hurt at all. If we're taking three and a half, you know, St. George could take sixty easy, if they wanted. So there's other cities that could even increase their share and are kind of waiting on the sidelines going, I'm in for one megawatt, I mean, we have. Have big cities, it's a one megawatt.
Capital were pretty high.
Right, we're we're very supportive of the project, but there's other cities that are more supportive.
Alright.
Yeah, so you you know, you watched Jeremy explain all this in great detail, so I I wanted to recognize the years of service. And very little paid at K R Johnson poured into this city to get us in the position we are in in power. And Jeremy's been able to run with that and have the comprehension of all these very complex issues. Um, that that's invaluable, that it is worth a tremendous amount, and we were really careful when we kind of authorized Jeremy to participate in that. U M's the way he does, cause it's a big time commitment, that it is, it is worth a lot. In order to really comprehend where we are in power, which is such a big part of what we budget for the city every year. Our power company is our biggest player, and we need to tend it well, and I, and Jeremy's doing that.
Thank you, and and that is absolutely true, this is, and this is the biggest project we've ever contemplated to, so it's, it's important. This is a, this is a really important thing, and it's spanned already multiple councils, you know, so it'll span more before. I mean, I'll be almost ready to retire, right? When we're collecting power, so it's, it's one of those projects that you do that's like, it's like a reservoir or something else, you know, you do it for the future, you don't do it. Necessarily for now, it's, it's, and this, this in my mind is the only. Base load power that makes sense going forward in the future. You can't run on solar and wind, you, you, those are not base load, you can't, you can't choose when to dispatch them. So you can have solar wind in your portfolio, but you gotta have something that you can back those with, so anyway. Alright, okay.
Kind of mind boggling. Um, any other questions on that before we move on?
We will send that to us then.
I will, I'll send that out to you.
So visitor center discussion, um. I I would throw out there kind of a brainstorm idea, and then let Jeremy run with with however he wants to kind of work this discussion and get our input. But um, I I would favor landing city maintaining control of how it projects its own image. As far as the visitor center, I would favor that our our. Our portion of the visitor center, which we'll we'll clear up in a minute. Um, being geared towards information and enhancing the visitor's experience. Not towards retail and 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 that. That being said, I think we could take a block of that building. And lease it out to one or more retail operators. Um, on a regular arms length discussion, commercial lease. Then they can run a business out of there and benefit from the traffic that the visitor center creates, that's kind of my brainstorm there. We could turn it into a profit center for us without being the one running the profit center. And also maintain as a city entity, our our public image rather than turning that over to a private player. Who may or may not, over the long term, represent us the way we want to be represented, so that's kind of my. That's my brainstorm idea, maybe it makes sense, maybe it doesn't.
But well, I just want to refresh on some of the information on it, because again, I think we need to know what the objective is, or at least. Understand why we're talking about it for each of us, could be different, but the economics of the visitor center currently what?
So, let me, let me stop this so people can see our pretty faces. Um, so the the reason this all started is before two reasons, number one, we we've had some interest. From other parties in in the contract that we have with C N H A. We're providing the things that we sell at the visitor center. The second thing that's kind of driving it is the T R T tax that we used to get from the county, at least for this year, has gone away. So that was helping to supplement visitor services that we were providing. So we went ahead and took a look at it, we looked at it from our side, we looked at it uh with you, looking at it from a different angle. We really feel like we're supplementing that about fifty thousand dollars a year. So, right now, we are.
And that's, so the supplementing it means after all of Blanning's T R T tax is gone, that's, that's not.
We looked at it the other way, where you said, let's not even talk about that, because we could use that on something else.
We're just saying, it's a net, it's a net loss of fifty thousand, however, however you pay for it. Whether regards where that money came from, how you wanna allocate it to them, okay.
It costs us fifty thousand dollars to run the visitor center above and beyond what it generates.
Yeah.
Um, and and for that fifty thousand dollars, we're, we're getting stuff, we're Purdue, we have a museum. We have a visitor center that we're, we're giving information to visitors, where, I mean, we've talked about all the the intrinsic benefits that it provides, we're. We're putting a good face on the community, I mean, I drive over there, we went over there with Logan Monson and looked at it, and there's a lot of people. Charging their car, eating lunch under the trees, I mean, it's a, it's a net benefit to visitors. The question is.
Is it worth fifty thousand dollars?
That's up to you.
This is what we're getting, that's the question, so no, that's good to go.
So that's kind of where we started, now, we, we looked at all of that, we spent time doing that, we went over and had a discussion at the visitor center. I know everyone's been encouraged to go over and look at themselves, and so what I told you I would do this time is come up with some options, and so. I I engaged Pratt to help me with this, and he's done a really good job on coming up with four different options. There's always, you guys can come up with an infinite number of options if you want to. But I'll turn this over to Pratt, because he's done so much work on it, and let him walk you through this, these slides.
We can go to that next one.
Alright. Maybe we can.
So, as Jerry mentioned, one of the, the idea was to bring options. Um, we would like to, you know, define a road to go down, um. And here's your options of what we liked, of what we felt would work, you know, some of these would be compromises, some of them would be. Ideal, some of them may not be ideal to certain individuals. Um, but the first option, of course, is we just leave the visitor center as it is, daily operations, everything stays the same. Um, you have a, you know, a a net operating cost of about fifty thousand dollars, and it's as simple as that, we keep it the same. We don't change anything. Um, as we, as we talked about, one of the main things that brought this up was that we had individuals that wanted to kind of be C N H A and take over that. Operation, it doesn't really make sense to necessarily have our people working and their business running in the same building. So we would send out an R F P and just give someone that option to run the building, maintain it, take care of it. Um, we can get into some more details with that as we go through these slides, but that's option number two. Um, this one kind of fits a little bit more of what uh the mayor had talked about with his brainstorm a few minutes ago. Take um, take the museum space, um which is roughly a thousand square feet. Fill that into two separate spaces and lease them to local companies. To generate revenue, but also have a visitor center that's fully operating, but just another form of. Um, creating revenue for that building.
And take out the C N H A area in front then, that would become, or you'd do both potentially.
So would they, it could be C N H A, it could be someone else, we would still have. Um, like I would say, just.
We still have the visitor center.
The visitor center will run, yeah, and you'll, and you'll be able to see that.
Museum would be cut into.
Into the two retail spaces, okay.
Yeah, and and.
And that was my thought, is what we do, uh, we do in this space and that space, we lease out for people to run a business out of and.
Okay.
Um, and then another option would be designate user space for a product displaying pedestals or a kiosk. That highlight local products and talent, so these ones will, as we go through the slides of, you know, I'll have examples and things like that for people to see.
That's an idea I had kicked around for a couple of years, and I'm, I'm less fond of that idea than I used to be, so.
And then as city council had an idea, we're willing to, you know, take a look at those as well. So the R F P again, with, you know, this.
And then, let me, you know, I don't have any other ideas right now, does anybody else have any specific ideas on visitor center?
I'd like to see these fleshed out.
Pretty much that one there is kind of where I had settled, so I'm glad they they had it in, in the mix that they had come up with.
Um, so again, you know, let's, let's use just, someone that owns a business currently that's tourism related would, you know, be preferable. They would say, okay, I'll pay X amount a month, I will employ one or two people to be there, they'll have their own hours, whatever they decide. But they will have control over that building, obviously, within that agreement, you know, we would have. Them agree to disperse blending area tourism information, so that people can still stop, get information. But instead of leaving, now they've got the option to, you know, invest in this person's private business being there. Um, so you don't lose the visitor's side of information, but you lose C N H A, you lose the museum. Most likely in that scenario.
The city ability to, like you said, manage our own brand and our own.
Yeah.
You're kind of turning that over.
Well, and there, there's not much incentive to s- to someone that's running their own business to convince people to go shop at other businesses.
No, there's not, so.
It depends on what type of business is there, I mean, it would.
Yeah, but I mean, if you're getting twenty thousand people there, you're probably gonna start selling water, start selling candy bars, start selling some of the products.
Concerned about things that are sold, sold in places.
You know, you're trying to make your living, not someone else's.
Yeah, I'm just, it would vary so much on what type of businesses is, what they would or wouldn't do, so.
Um, and of course, you know, there'd have to be some relatively strict managing of that building, I mean, we. We're gonna want them to take care of it, clean it daily, um, it gets cleaned daily currently. Um, you know, things of that nature that, so the building, we don't get a. Rundown building back in a year when their lease is up, and things of that nature, so, again. Relatively easily, you'd be able to find out what someone else is doing in another city, take their ideas, make it better for us, and send out a R F P. To anyone for that, so that, that again was an option.
And some, some cities do this, I mean, this is, I've, I've found lease agreements where people do this. It would be really hard to run the museum, because there's a lot, most of that stuff in the museum is not owned by the city. Most of it is not owned by the city, they're owned by private individuals who have loaned them to us. So it'd be pretty tough to lease that out to someone else and have them take responsibility for it and those kind of things, so. Really, you're looking at, this is the option where you just say, we don't wanna run the visitor center anymore, we're gonna lease the property out to whoever wants to run it. So that's, that's really what you're doing, if we wanna make a condition of the lease that they have to give out our brochures. That's fine, but like I said, there's not a lot of incentive for them to give those out either, they wanna sell their products, they don't really, they might leave them in the corner and someone can take them, but. I don't think you're gonna get the same visitor service as you're getting now.
Um, building out the museum, um. Ideally, you'd have two tourism related businesses in those spaces to sell a service or a good, tour operations, souvenirs. Things of that nature, right, that benefit from someone coming in, you know, high traffic people coming in, buying their product. Um, the benefit of this is that you get to, you know, continue having space. On the south end of the building for a smaller museum, um, C N H A related items, if we wanted to continue a contract with them. Things of that nature. You could convert, if you've been in there recently, behind the check, I guess the checkout, there's a TV room, it's probably. I don't know, ten by fifteen, you know, you could open that wall up. Keep things on the wall, make that kind of an exhibit room, whereas now it's kind of more of a sitting. Room with a TV that plays a video about the grand circle. Um, so you can convert that into a couple of different things. The computer room, you know, you can pull out those computers, put in a bar with charging stations. Be a spot for people to come sit down for an hour while they.
That's the one little room we looked at, across from the TV room.
Yes.
Yes, yeah, it's currently, it's currently got three.
They're not using it right now, are they?
No, I mean, most people nowadays, you have a tablet, your phone, I mean, you have so many different things you're not really needed. Uh, someone else's desktop, but if you'll go to that next slide, you can kind of see, so so currently, there's two entrances. Um, two exterior entrances into that building.
So, so these entrances, I don't know why this keeps opening, this dumping.
I can touch it or.
Those two entrances currently exist.
They're there.
Um, so all you would really have to do. You would have to um build a wall between them and build some sort of ceiling over the top of them, but they, they currently exist.
So the stairs go up and you've got, you know, a little walk running like this, but that doesn't really matter, you'd be able to ceiling off this area. You'd be left with two spaces with their own entrances. Um, this one you could other sell off a little, but it, there's an entrance currently right there and right here for the restrooms, it exists, so. People would still be able to, if they didn't want, any of the businesses or the visitor center, they're still just allowed to go to the restrooms. And leave if that's what they prefer. Um, which would leave all this area though, over there.
That's the TV.
To, yeah, to continue visitor center operations, like they are now just on a little bit smaller scale at the museum.
We, we haven't run this idea fully down, but we would, if you, if you liked this and want us to do more work on it, we could come up with costs. To build those out, and we could also come up with rent, I mean, just thinking. If you're a tourism business, this is a real benefit to you to be here because of the thousands, tens of thousands of visitors that are already coming to this visitor center. So you have built in traffic that you would not otherwise have, and it would be utilities included because we couldn't split those up. So, I mean, just off the top of our head, we're thinking eight hundred to a thousand dollars a month. I mean, that's what it probably should be worth, I don't know, we'd be taking a risk that we could rent those out, but. If you could rent them for a thousand dollars a month each, and you had two of them, you're looking at twenty four thousand a year, so you're, you are um. Cutting that subsidy in half, or the cost of running your.
And so does this plan here still allow for s- some museum items to be displayed?
Yeah, yeah, so you you could convert that whole TV room area into a.
I I absolutely would hate.
Uh, you know, a huge shade.
That footprint.
And you could, you could also.
Make a rotate, a rotation.
A rotation, yeah, rotating exhibits or something.
Yeah, you know, so that they'd be able to do.
It'd be sad.
Every three months, they switch out.
If you switch out.
Take it from the basement, put them up there.
And what's smart about that is that that brings people back.
Yeah.
You know, when it's always the same, it's not exciting.
You're gonna take, you're gonna take it down from about a thousand square feet to probably a hundred and fifty.
Right.
It's gonna be much, much smaller. But.
You have the ability to rotate, but also with that, with that small of a space. With that small of a space, you know, you're able to do different things that we've never been able to do as well, you get a little more creative. Do things differently, and like you said, every, every other month, it's a different exhibit type scenario there. And you, if you wanted to get rid of anything up in the front, if you didn't want to use C N H A, you could use that as museum space as well. But it still leaves, gives you the option to have.
And we still do the C N H A over here.
Yeah, I don't know the right word, C N H A is.
Well, our, our current contractor.
Yeah, contractor would have a space and we'd have our own museum space, you could even flip those, right? You could put C N H A stuff in the back and a museum in the front with a little more space, more like three hundred and fifty, so. You're open to all of that, you know, you could tear down the walls in that computer room and make it, you know, another part of that. There's different things you could do, but most importantly, you could split that thousand square feet out. Benefit two local businesses and, you know, pumping traffic to them for a price each month would be.
So my concern. So my concern though is that because it's in our building, um, whoever's selected will be a reflection of the city. And so in our, I don't know if you would call this an RFP too. Um, I, I would say we needed, we would need to be pretty specific about what we're okay with being sold in those places. Because, because of how it will reflect on us. If we have, if we have someone in there that's maybe extremely political with, with whatever they're selling. Then visitors that walk into there because they're at the Blanding Visitor Center, come out of there and say, I can't believe how. Offensive Blanding City is. I mean, we have to.
You have, you have a no monument and a pro monument, both people next to each other fighting. It's not gonna work out. Super well, so.
That, that is a legitimate concern though, even though you can kind of delineate that, say that these are leased spaces well. Like you don't, uh, you know, neighbors in the mall don't necessarily get reflected upon by the stores next to them, but everybody gets that.
Yeah.
They know that those are individual stores. This is a little less clear because you're at the Blanding Visitor Center, so. It, it does have a stronger reflection than other types of retail setups.
No, but if, if any, take any business that didn't go, do a good job or offended somebody for whatever reason. That would still reflect, if it was in Blanding, people would say, oh, that place in Blanding. I mean, to be honest, the end result, I don't know that it's that much different.
It's more so here because it's under our umbrella.
Yeah, but that's what I'm saying. Like at the end of the day, like it's still like, oh, that place in whatever town, uh, you know, I don't know how much more it really. Yeah, so I mean, yeah, valid concern, but I'm just saying, yeah, I, I think it, it happens no matter where they are.
You're saying we may want to lock down the lease agreement to say, nothing offensive, nothing political, we may have to.
I think so.
It might not hurt to set a little bit of parameters because I think the reflection on the city here is. Multiple times more than just any other business because it is, I, I like your word, the umbrella. It's our building and so it does, it has a different impact. Every business does, but this would have a different, stronger impact.
And just public perception, even if they're paying a lease, people think that we're giving that to someone. Even, even when it's completely spelled out, people think that we're sponsoring those businesses because, because they're.
We chose to let them be there.
Exactly.
Kind of are, we kind of are.
Yeah, so.
Well, if you had effectively an RFP for the space. And somebody says, I'll give you twelve fifty a month and run the business this way, and then somebody else said, I'll give you nine hundred and run it that way. It's, it, you know, you're still gonna be picking somebody however that evolves, but.
Plus we're assuming that there's, there's interest in this and there may not be. I mean, there may not be people that want to run a business, just need the space. I don't.
We, we would, if we were to pursue this very aggressively, we would want to have some feelers out there that said, you know. What is the interest in this? Not just if we build it, they will come.
And, and we need to think about, and I don't know what it looks like, but be like, okay, in five years or ten years, what do we think it should be? Cause this, I don't know, I mean, you said one time, I think that, you know, somebody said of the, you know, if this is twenty years ago. If we're doing the visitor center now, it probably wouldn't look exactly like it looks today. And, you know, what, what do we plan on this evolving into as well? You know, is this, is this phase one of, of a couple? I don't really know, but we need to at least kind of think about what this evolves into.
And we have to have a backup plan for what happens if one or both pull out and then you have these empty spaces. What does that look like? What's the plan there?
Full tables.
My office, Jeremy's office.
Okay, you gotta figure it out.
Somebody said a bar, but then he said a computer bar, and so I guess that's.
Yeah, we send Lee Sin Kim over there. I don't know what that, you're right on that, you know, but. But the idea was, let's get an initial plan and then we can really go through and dial down, dial in the details, what it'd look like in. A phase one and a phase two.
This would be a business venture and we'd be looking to generate some revenue off of it and hope that our clients are also successful. And there's risk in a business venture.
I mean, I think, I think even if you couldn't get the interest at a thousand, I would think you could definitely find two people at six or seven hundred dollars, right? I think at a certain price you could fill them out year round and.
Anyone that may be, may say, make, make an aggressive bid and take, take both, you know, we don't know, we don't. But we would want to feel out that interest.
How do we benefit from this just for the rent or can you get a percentage of the sales and rent, you know?
It would just be rent.
I mean, we could do whatever you wanted, but. But I think.
That's just clean, just clean, yeah.
Well, and to me, the rent is somewhat comparable to what we're getting from our current contractor. You know, and I think that that's something that you need to be.
And we would still have them too.
Right, and so we're not, we're not favoring.
We're not charging a lot more and a lot less to somebody else. Yeah. And, and really this gives them the option. To have, like the mayor said, their hours whenever they want it. They want to be open later, earlier. They don't want to be open three days a week. They can. Do what they want, so.
Okay.
Like even though we're planning closing the visitor center in the winter time, they may choose to keep it open, run their business if that's what they want to do.
Hey Pratt and Jeremy, what is the plan? What would the plan be with the upstairs in this? Kind of a drawing, I guess, because they would still have access to that. Would that just come with one of the spaces or would we close that off in a way or?
It would be closed off. So these stairs, there would have to be a door that accesses these stairs, but really right now upstairs, there's just. Storage, it's really hard to make that usable space, especially with ADA, because there's no way to access it.
Do we, do we need the space for storage of stuff? We, I guess if we have a rotating museum space, we may use it that way.
Yeah, right now, right now, the high volume things they store up there, so they're not going clear down down to the basement. You know, some of the high volume things they, they keep up there. Um, I mean, that could be a phase two of, you know, building out the entire upstairs into another area, but there's still not gonna be.
ADA.
There's not gonna be real access in terms of. People, customers going up there, but there'll be access of, say, you did offices or something.
We want them to visit. We wondered about it at some point, walling off parts of that basement too and using that as rental.
Basement has some potential.
I agree.
It would cost a lot more because there's no heat and cooling down there, but.
That's, that's a big space.
But that might be phase two to, to lease out some space in the basement. Would we want to do that?
It's, it's a massive building and that's.
In the perfect world, you have one or two successful businesses in here and we're generating. Twenty five or thirty thousand dollars in lease revenue off of it and everybody's winning, you know, but we don't live in a perfect world, so. And this is. We don't know how that's gonna evolve, but it does have a potential to be very beneficial all the way around.
How would you plan on doing this as far as length of time? Would it, how often would it get renewed and come up for a re, rebid, re?
Well, that depends on how, yeah.
Just wait a second.
How much it has to be built out, how. I, I think if, if you guys like this, we're, we're just still in the very initial.
You know, I don't, I don't know what else, what other options we have to try to make this a little bit more.
I don't hate this.
There's one more option, so.
I, I mean, go, and so the next option would be.
I know what I have in mind.
Next option is just a pedestal kiosk. So this, keep in mind, this isn't like what we're doing. This is just a visual example of what I had in my mind. You have, you know, seven or eight of these throughout one side of the building, which would be that, you know, the resemble side of all the windows. You know, something like this that could display two or three products, you know, we have individuals that sell. Pottery that have the little bears, ears, bears, you know, and highlight two or three of those and outside of it would have a. You know, a business card that says, this is where you can get this product. So it's the benefit of the private business pays X amount a year, right? Say it's a thousand dollars a year to get twenty five to thirty five thousand people in front of their business. Um, especially if they have an online business, someone can go home and order it. But now we've put that many people in front of them where they may not have seen out Main Street or if it's off Main Street. Um. If that makes sense.
Yeah, so the idea is to get, you know, a thousand dollars per, per.
Per space in here.
You know, to try to be equivalent with the other, the thing we just talked about, you need twenty five or so.
And I don't, I don't think you're gonna get anything.
Yeah, I mean, this, this is just a, a way to supplement seven to ten, right? Like just finding a way to do that, but. So the other thing that we'd have, along with people wanting to just have the whole building, we've had a lot of people that want their products in. The visitor center, but how do you, you know, we don't, we don't want you to come to us to buy it. We want you to go to their store to buy it. That's always been our motto.
Any, any person who takes one or both of those spaces could implement this idea.
Exactly.
Yeah, absolutely. They could lease it out for advertising space to other businesses.
Hey man, I'm good. I'm doing a great business in here. Why don't you bring your stuff in so we can direct people to you?
I mean, I, I look at.
Sell their stuff on consignment or anything.
I look at, say, a local photographer that has amazing, you know, tours, photography is something you can roll up, take home. Purchase the digital copy right in there. But, you know, where this thing is gonna be twenty seven by eighteen, you know, you could line up a whole walls in our gallery, someone walk in there. Love what they see, either buy it digitally or in person, put it in a car and leave. And that guy, the only way of finding this photographer was maybe through Facebook accidentally up until that point, right? You could employ someone to sit there two days a week, seven days a week, whatever you decided. But that way, they're benefiting, we're benefiting, and our visitor center stays open to do the things that it does well too, so.
Um, I kind of like the idea of that, that possibility of anyone. So I mean, if we're putting feelers out for interest in the other idea. Anybody we're talking to, we could say, you know, this is something you might think about too, is helping promote other businesses in your business. And, you know, and then they can work out whatever deal they want. Maybe they get a cut, you know, whatever they do, you know, so.
Yep.
Hmm, oh, there's some interesting ideas.
And I don't think in terms of building out those two rooms, it wouldn't be. Knock on wood. Shouldn't be too expensive. I mean, you've just got to virtually get a roof over them. The doors already exist, some form of heating and cooling, you know, but you can buy an individual unit for each. Each space that, you know, just runs off the electricity type thing. So I, I think it's a, it's an affordable option as well. Um.
See, yeah, that's the problem, right? We're gonna have to spend money.
Spend money.
Twenty five, thirty thousand dollars maybe to build those out. I mean, that's just, that's just my guess, but so the first year you're gonna pay for the build out. And you're gonna start making money to go towards your.
Well, what's hard here is there's no wonderful scenario that exists, a wonderful scenario, to be honest, in my, in my opinion, so.
Well, you've got a.
We have a really big building. And we've, we've always kind of been just using a portion of it. And then we have a museum in the other portion. And we have a huge full basement and we have a full upstairs catwalk and we have a massive property with. Trees and sidewalk and parking lot. I mean, it's, it's a beautiful facility. It's just. Uh, people interact with it differently than they did sixteen years ago.
Yes.
So we need to change it a little bit.
So, so those are options. We're not, you know, demanding your decision right now, but. Keep that in mind, you know, maybe the next meeting, we, we have a defined. Road to go down and we can start really getting some numbers and ideas and lease agreements and things like that to fit.
Well, there seems to be enough interest in that idea and that, and that meets this. For not having really had any conversation, you guys have thrown this idea out there. You kind of nailed what I've been thinking a little bit and I, so I like, I, I think we need to really explore it and, and see if we can make it work.
I like this.
That's the one. Logan, you like that one? Haven't heard from you.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, overall, I think it's a good starting point. I don't know if it's like. A home run right now for me, but I think it's, it's something I could get behind, I guess.
Okay. It's a good solid double.
Double, double, and bounce once and then another bounce.
It sounds like the others don't necessarily want us to look at too much. Is that?
No.
Kind of what I'm hearing. They're, they're not quite as feasible with what we're trying to do.
If we were ever to like change the whole building, I don't think that an RFP would be the option for me personally. I don't think that that makes sense. If we wanted to go to that extreme, I would almost say you make the visitor center, the city office and. Change the whole thing that way if you were gonna do something to the whole building. But I don't. I don't have thoughts on actually either.
Well, I wouldn't mind finding out if there was interest for the whole building though. Like I don't, I don't hate that if there's a, I mean, if there's interest in it, then yeah, then I get interested in it, so.
Actually sell it or just lease the whole building?
I don't think you sell it. I think you lease it. I mean, there's, that's how lots of businesses are and, and that means, I don't know what that means for having a, a visitor center per se. But I think that's worth looking into what people are interested in.
To me, that would require a very strict scope of, of what we're looking for, so that we. Have the right people in there representing Blanding's brand.
Or, or we just take down the visitor center altogether and it's just somebody else just leasing.
To me, that's an option. Yeah, somebody, if there's demand for it and it's, it's great enough and it's worth looking into, that means a lot of things. There's still some version of the visitor center. There is no visitor center per se. I mean, it just depends on the interest in that building, so.
So we'll, we'll keep doing some work on that too.
I mean, it looks like we'll do.
Part about that is usually you do more of like a triple net lease where they're paying for all the utilities, all the maintenance. It's gonna be a s, a building of that size. It's gonna be quite expensive. I mean, it's gonna be.
So part of it plays into that equation as far as what Logan's mentioning is that, you know, maybe somebody just would lease the whole building and they do whatever they want and we don't, we don't have visitor center anymore. So that brings back the question of, do we want the visitor center and what level of subsidy are we comfortable providing that service? And maybe this, maybe this lease of this space kind of closes that gap.
And obviously if we start to get some other county money back and we start to get our own room tax back up and.
If there was an area where that could be just a true net positive, like it was a hard bottom line, it made money. For the citizens, that would be hard to not look at that. So that's what I'm saying. If that was true, it's where you could rent it out, it, it's where you had a bottom line, you know, legitimate profit. Versus, you know, a true net negative now, that's, I don't know, you would have to look at that if there's interest.
And we can, we can.
We can even look at those two options.
Gotta be, just.
These options give us more than we've ever had to really dig our heels in to look at, so. The, the one thing that's not gonna change is, is visitors, tourism is never going to be late, so. You know, the way they interact with the building will always be different, but you'll always have people stopping and wanting to know. What's going on and how to get places, you know, just to be safe until we have cell phone towers in. Every single part of San Juan County, but.
Yep.
Try next to the oil. Um, okay. Moving on, parking lot maintenance. Uh, Terry, let me ask you one question and then I'll run with this for just a second and get back to you. Did, did you, did, did we get an answer from Legrand on my question?
Yes.
And what was the answer?
Hmm. Depending on Mobe, about, probably about fifteen percent. And most of that is just in quantities. I did a revised quantity, but then we're gonna save. Oh, about forty five hundred, um. Because, so that area that's crosshatched on the east side on your screen right there, yeah, Jeremy's circling it. That, Dallin's gonna pay for that, for Ace Hardware. And so there's about a forty five hundred dollar savings there, um.
Okay, so let me, let me take the floor back. I see, cause you jumped ahead on me. I, I had a whole deal all planned out.
Okay, go for it.
Here's the deal. Uh, the condition of the law, in my experience, having run, managed parking lots of my own, it needs to be done. It does, doing it does not impact our capital projects because Blanding City has been very frugal for a lot of years and we have savings. That we can choose to use in, for projects that come up, that, uh, and so it doesn't impact that way. Um, it's, it's the right time to do it because it's, the neighbors are doing theirs. Everything about it in my mind says we should do it, but what I asked Terry to do and I called Dallin myself. And asked if he would participate on that portion that has the single car in it.
This square right here.
Where that is mostly used by them and he agreed to split the cost of that portion. And I don't know if Legrand would give a little. I asked for some concession from Legrand because they then don't have to mobilize twice to do it. And so. And so. I, I think it was the right thing to do before and we probably would have still pursued some avenues to make it less expensive, but now we most certainly have made it less expensive. And so I'd let Terry run with exactly where we ended up and I, I think we're. I think we got a good time to do it and should jump on it. So, okay, back to you, Terry.
Yeah, so the advantage we have by doing it now rather than another time. Is that Dallin's gonna participate fifty percent on that piece, which comes out to about forty-five hundred dollars. And then the other place we save is, or, or the big savings is in mobilization. Uh, I, I don't know, but Dallin knows that he's paying the mobilization, but the quote I have does not include any of that, that assumes they're already here and that's what. Uh, Ryan Holyoke portrayed to me is, hey, we'll be there doing it anyway, do you wanna do yours? I didn't ask what that Mobe fee would be, but you know, it's, it's usually in that area of. Three to five thousand dollars, you know, so it's, it's right there. So we're, we're looking at somewhere between a probably twelve and seventeen percent. Savings by doing the project now versus at some later date, of course. Asphalt usually goes up with, uh, fuel. And fuel rarely comes down, although it has recently some. Typically, you can assume a project will always cost more over time, not less.
So, so this fifteen, the twelve to seventeen percent savings would be off of this number that you're looking at.
Yeah, I, I think, I think would be about fifty-five thousand, three hundred dollars. Give or take, depending on the final square footage.
That's with, uh, that's with LaGrande and, and, uh, the participation from Ace.
Does, does the city use this park at all? I mean, I was always under the assumption that was Aces, cause that's, that's where I park and I go to Ace.
A lot of you're a city employee.
I mean, I'm just like.
Yeah, it's, it's, um.
I still can't be good, I'm not overly against doing it, but if it was mine, I, I don't think it's bad, I wouldn't do it yet. It's not bad enough that it's, it needs done, um. Some insignificant amount of money and I would be like, well, hey, that gets you, I, I'd kinda more go for, hey, Ace, you can do all of that portion right there and you can still use it. I mean, they need it and good, good for them, you know, that's, that's good, but you know, that's kind of all it gets used for. In all the days I've ever seen them, so I'd be more on board with it then, so.
I'll start parking over there if you want me to.
I, I think the, the cost of it, the, the cost of it eventually will only go higher and we won't have.
Well, that, that's, that's true about everything though, I mean, I mean, if we beat the drum of inflation, like yes, that's everything, we'll also get more taxes in the future too. So that's not a very good argument for this, but the doing it at the same time is a good argument. I mean, other than saying, hey, the future present value of money and hey, we don't have to do this for fifteen years, you know, if you compare it against that scenario, it's not cheaper now. That's just.
But have we already waited that, like, longer than we should have, weren't we going to do it before now?
We, we had planned to do it four years ago and then, and then Dallin decided he didn't have the money to do it at that point, and so we waited. Cause we always wanted this combined benefit when we do it. This is the third time we've discussed it, it'd be nice, I'm not running your meeting, but it'd be nice to get.
Well, my, my thought come in this meeting, if backing with Dallin. Saved his money. And, yeah, I think, I think it needs.
Cause that money won't be saved in the future, he's done.
Yeah, he's not gonna be doing it, and so.
Or a comment?
Oh, it's about, that's what I came in here thinking, if, if it was a, if we're gonna save money on this, then I said, well, I'd probably be okay with it if. If it wasn't gonna be any cheaper, then I would say, well, let's budget it and do it later, but. Here, I'll make, I'll make a motion. I'll just make a motion, we're gonna do parking lot. Okay, that's Turk and Perkins, any other discussion on the motion?
I think, so this is Logan, um, my hesitation, I guess, and I, and I think we've addressed it a little bit, but my hesitation is. More directed to. The perception of where we're spending our money, especially this year, with budget cuts and things that. I'm not convinced that I. Know, I guess.
Okay, call for a vote, call in favor.
Say, I'm, at, at this one, I'm gonna vote no, just because if it was my personally, I wouldn't do it, therefore, I'm not, I'm not gonna go spend public's money on it. I mean, it's not terrible, but that's, I mean, I keep coming back to that, I wouldn't do it right now, it's my money, so.
Okay, that's legit answer. So we had two, I, Logan, Monson?
I'm gonna go with a no.
And we're building it because that one rare occasion when there's actually a split, oh. I've never seen a mayor vote, in all the years I've sat at this table, there's only been one tonight. Yeah, we, yeah, he did hefty once. He didn't like the time we made him vote. Oh, good discussion though, but it concerns.
Kim, we have, we have, why don't you call out the votes so that she can get it.
Uh, Robert Turk, I. Uh, Katie Perkins, I, Logan's Monson and Shumway Nae and Mayor, I. But it's a good discussion, we're, I think we're being, you know, we're being careful, we're trying to not. Do things un, unwisely. Moving on, county commission meeting review.
All right, I do have a couple of things to bring up, um, I have copies of the resolutions, if anybody wants to know, there's a couple of resolutions. Uh, Sheriff's Office, they, they passed a resolution supporting the Sheriff's Office. So that was good, um, Commissioner. Three eyes mostly talked about, that he hasn't seen any sheriffs in Navajo Mountain, so that was part of the discussion. Um, the second resolution, I think, is a lot more controversial, it's a resolution of the commissioners expressing support for the Navajo Nation and Navajo hunting rights within San Juan County. This might be something that you wanna look at, but, um, basically. They, there was a treaty in eighteen sixty-eight. That had language that, uh, the Navajo tribe can retain the right to hunt on any unoccupied lands contiguous to the reservation. So long as the large game may range thereon in such numbers to justify the chase, that's the wording, and so they're, they're. Bringing up the idea that, um, especially on Elk Ridge, Blue Mountain, that, uh. Navajo Nation members should be able to hunt there. For free with. Tags, I don't, I, I didn't totally understand that part, but, but it shouldn't be a limited entry area for. For members of the Navajo Nation because of this eighteen sixty-eight treaty.
Isn't that a DWR issue, not a county issue?
Sure, but everything becomes a county issue if they want it to be, so.
They're just voicing an opinion, uh, cause there's some discussion out there.
They didn't pass this resolution at the meeting, they decided to hold off, there was some language in it that was somewhat problematic and contradictory, and so they decided to wait. For another meeting, but I'm just making you guys aware of it, cause it's something that would impact our residents quite substantially. Maybe for the positive, maybe for the negative, it depends on who you are.
City manager items in.
So here are a couple of things I'll pass out, take one of those and pass along. The first one is the free water check, I think, I don't know if anybody's seen this, um, but this is sort of part of that. The water project that we did with USU, um, extension. They are offering a free water check, landscaping water for any planning residents who'd like to take advantage of that. Yeah, we've been advertising it, there's information there, we did it on the park behind the visitor center and. Uh, David and Brian thought it was very beneficial, they come out and they actually put out some cups and they run your sprinklers and they measure your water in different places. And help you decide how much water you need to be most efficient, so you're not overwatering, underwatering, they help you design your sprinkler system with. With that in mind, so you can be as efficient as possible, which is always a good thing for us. Uh, the second one I passed out there is the CARES grant for small businesses, so this is a combined effort between San Juan County, Blanding, Monticello and Bluff. To help, uh, small businesses get some of the CARES Act funding to help them, this is, we sent an email around a little bit, a couple of weeks ago. Uh, this is, the, the county set aside two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out there. CARES Act money, they got about eight times what we got, so. Kudos to them for wanting to take some of that money and push it down to small businesses. Um, so there should be quite a bit of money to start with, there's a, there, you can kinda see some of the requirements.
I'm assuming this website gives the parameters and, you know, the requirements for somebody to apply. Pretty extensive.
You'll do a Google form, you know, that's probably about fifteen questions, I think, of just. Name, business name, business address, you know, how many employees do you have? You know, what's your estimated gross loss because of COVID, some of those pretty simple, that's pretty simple. There's a profit, um, profit and loss statement you have to fill out. Uh, it looks a little more intimidating than it actually is, you know, but. Um, we're doing an open house tomorrow evening from five to seven to help anyone, we'll probably continue to do that as well.
So there's gonna be an open house in this room tomorrow night, five to seven, for any businesses that wanna come. The county is requiring masks, so if you come to the open house, you're required to wear a mask for that one, it's kind of a county meeting, not ours. But also, I would volunteer Pratt Services to help any business that needs help working through the application process. He'd be happy to help. So.
It's one of those things that initially you might look at it, because it's gonna take a while, but I think with them, if you know your business, I think within about. Thirty minutes, it'd be done. Um, they've got it built out to where it'll kind of rank you. Um, through an Excel spreadsheet, it'll rank you, but then myself, the new city manager of Monticello. Uh, representative from Bluff and then a representative from the county, every Friday, we'll go over each application. Um, see if that ranking's correct, if they need more or less money. And then the next Tuesday, they'll be cut a check and we'll just do that every Friday and Tuesday until. Um, until the funds expire or until October thirty-first is the plan.
So, a, a, a lot of these things I would assume are, are mutually exclusive. And some maybe are not. Uh, if you have, if you got some kind of money from this program, then you can't apply for this one or that one. Or, and maybe some of them are allowed to overlap, I don't know how any of that works, but.
So.
If somebody, if somebody jumps on this, are they jeopardizing the fact that they did something else and already?
No, it's, it, it's not looking like they're gonna do another round of PPP at this point. Um, so, the. Pay text, paycheck protection program is the PPP. Uh, there was that one, that gave you, um, X amount of weeks of payroll virtually. That seemed to be a pretty simple process, we had people from the senators and governor's office come down. And meet with some local businesses to get feedback, we had. Zion's Bank, we had Four Corners Home Healthcare, Monticello Businesses, um, Zion's Bank. Um, come through and give them feedback, but that one seemed to be a pretty simple process, getting this isn't gonna, shouldn't harm you in any way.
Well, it's like, I know I was doing some reading on the EIDL, Economic Impact, whatever, whatever. And that one, I, I, I know somewhere in some reading I did on that one, it was all evolving in the spring that it said. If you do this, then you, you exclude yourself from these other things, and that's what I was concerned is we, maybe we. We need to know that we're not putting somebody in jeopardy of some violation, that all of a sudden they're in trouble for.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think, I mean, Natalie's pretty thorough when it comes to vetting these things and, and almost every other county's doing. This, I mean, was it, I know it's not, what's Vernals?
You went to counties.
Doing this, Grand County.
Or being careful, we're not, we're not giving people bad advice and all of a sudden they're in legal jeopardy.
Yeah, no, that, that EIDL was an advance with the option of forgive, forgiveness possibly. But you were gonna get ten grand upfront and then they were gonna go through the, kind of the scenario and if it worked out, it would be forgiven. But there was a chance it was just a ten thousand dollar advance, and I would guess that's where that language came in of. If we're giving you ten grand now, you can't ask for fifteen in the PPP. I'm not sure, cause I know, I know the one.
Maybe that's what I saw.
One reason I know that he's both of those in Blanding was Four Corners, and they used. The EIDL for a certain part and the PPP for a certain part, but they didn't overlap. So.
Maybe that's what.
Like, I think maybe one of them was for, you know, a certain sector of business and one was just for payroll, but they didn't overlap, so that they didn't go. So that's as much as I know about it, though.
So always check with your accountant.
Yeah, your county you have on staff.
Exactly.
As many, as, as many counties that are using their, their first or second way for this. Um, I would assume by now, you know. They would, they would've came out and said, don't do this.
Somebody would've called them out.
You're gonna be, but I think the idea is that most of this is because of there not being another round of PPP as far as they know.
So two, two last items, um, Fall Festival is set for October tenth. So we do have the fireworks and the band scheduled and set, so that will be the day, it's Columbus weekend.
Nice.
Um, I think that's gonna be a lot of fun and we'll, we'll start working heavily on that, let me know how much you wanna be involved, if at all. Good, and then I did meet with Shelby and Casper again on Friday, went over a couple of, uh. Changes that they wanted to see, they were pretty minimal on the, on the contract, and so I'll make those changes, run it by Kendall. And we're hoping to have something for you to look at and approve at the next meeting, so. We're, we're getting closer, it's a little bit trickier than, than we thought, but we're getting there, so that's all I have.
Awesome.
Hey, thanks, anything on information from council? Hearing none, I don't know of an executive session.
I'll make a motion, we adjourned.
As Perkins and Shumway all in favor?
Aye.